Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Willow's Planning Commission meeting. Today's date is August 5th, 2025, Willow City Hall at 6:00 PM. First up is Item 1, Call to Order. Are you going to take role?
It's after the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm gonna make an apology right at the beginning. I just, I work at the school. We just started back. I'm gonna do my best to be on tonight. So I'm gonna apologize upfront. I'll probably apologize later, too. First up is Pledge of Allegiance.
What can the rest of us use as an excuse?
The Lute Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Nygaard.
Here.
Commissioner Ocampo.
Here.
Commissioner Valencia. Vice Mayor Quorum.
Here.
Chair.
Here. Item 4, Changes to the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? I do have one suggestion. I was wondering if we wanted to move the hotel and handle that first?
I think I'd be agreeable to that. This is probably far less of a contentious issue than the other two, so.
How does, how do you guys feel about that?
I agree.
That's fine.
Is there a motion?
Excuse me. Will you be moving that to Item 6?
6A?
6A, okay.
I motion to move the hotel agenda item to 6A.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the agenda with the change to move Item C, The Sparks by Hilton Hotel, to Item 6A. Item 5 is Public Comment and Consent.
Did you call for the vote? Was there a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Third, no. It's gonna be a long night for me. Item 5, Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved with a single vote unless removed for separate discussion by the Chair and Commissioners. Individuals wishing to speak on consent items or matters not on the agenda are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the City Clerk. All remarks shall be directed to the Chair and Council members and are limited to three minutes. By law, the Council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda.
If I could just mention, speaker cards are over here on this table, and tonight I am acting as the City Clerk.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to get up and make a comment about anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Item 5A, Minutes Approval. Recommended Action, Approve the Minutes of the July 1st, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the July 1 minutes.
I'll second, but I have a question. I have read the minutes and I watched that meeting. Is it okay then that I vote?
You can vote as approval as to form, which basically means that these are properly formatted minutes, but you're not, you weren't present, and so you weren't, can't necessarily attest to the content of those minutes.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
I didn't catch it. Is that?
Does that mean he can vote?
Yes or no?
So the answer is yes, if you vote as approval as to form, because you were not present, but you are basically attesting to that these are properly formatted minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so next up, Item 6 would be The Sparks by Hilton Hotel Design Review. File number DR-25-03 and Conditional Use Permit. It's on 457 North Humboldt Avenue.
All right. Good evening. My name is Amy Rossig, a contract planner with Harrison Associates. So the project before you right now is the Sparks by Hilton Hotel expansion. Next slide, please. Project site, as you mentioned, is at 457 North Humboldt Avenue, which is on the western side of North Humboldt Avenue. It's adjacent to Interstate 5 highway ramp. The project site is zoned highway commercial. And the site is developed already with an existing hotel. It was formerly a Super 8 by Wyndham Motel. It contained 30, or it does contain 37 hotel rooms, and it was constructed in 1978. Next slide, please. So the applicant is proposing, in addition to the western side of the existing hotel, it would contain 36 hotel rooms that range from King and Queen and accessible hotel rooms. They're also proposing to increase the parking. The county code, or the city code, requires one parking spot for every hotel room plus two spots for a manager's unit. So since they will have 73 hotel rooms total, they're proposing 75 parking spaces. They're also proposing some new landscaping in an area that is currently gravel dirt area. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is one of the elevations. This is the northern elevation. And the reason why I wanted to include this is because this approval also requests a conditional use permit to increase the height limit. Right now, in the Highway Commercial Zoning District, the maximum height limit is 35 feet. This addition would be three stories in height and would be 38 feet. They're proposing a gable roof to match the existing hotel that's on the property. Next slide, please. This is a design rendering of what the color board is going to look like. They're proposing a lot of grays and violets. This is consistent with the branding of The Sparks label. Next slide, please. I also want to include some information for you about the signage. A lot of the existing signage infrastructure is going to remain. They're gonna reuse it, rebrand it with the, that's consistent with the Spark branding. Some of the minor changes that they're going to propose are, there's a existing sign that's about, I think, 15 feet in height, and they're proposing to reconstruct it to be about seven feet in height. This would be along North Humboldt Avenue. And then they're also proposing some wall signage, as you can see on the image on the bottom of this slide. Next slide, please. So with all of that information, I recommend, or staff is recommending approval of the design review and the conditional use permit to increase the height to 38 feet, where 35 feet is normally required. I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here in the audience to answer any questions as well.
Yeah. Are they gonna refresh the current landscaping? I heard you say they're gonna put new landscaping in, but refresh the current landscaping?
So I know that they were gonna maintain it. I'm not sure the exact condition of it at this moment in time and what they'll be refreshing. I'm not sure to that.
The other thing that I had, I had hoped to see a fire department report that the extra footage would be okay with them, and we don't have that. So that's gotta be a condition before we approve anything, is that?
Correct.
We have to consent to that.
Yes, absolutely. So that would be something that they would review usually at building permit to make sure that meets all the fire requirements, like exits and emergency fire access and all of that.
Well, I'm happy to see that Hilton is coming to our town. I just wish they had a restaurant with it.
So has it happened? The fire department looked over everything yet, or?
No, they haven't reviewed everything. We did reach out to them and note that the building height would be three foot higher than the allowed building height in that area, and they didn't have any, any comments regarding that or have any issue with it. But what we can do is start reporting all this. We normally add them to the conditions of approval if it's in there. This was, this was a little more informal than that, but we can include those comments in the next reports. But there was no issue when reaching out to the fire department.
The ladder truck will reach that height, so that would be what normally would be the concern.
Is it critical or important that the fire department addresses in print? So it's in the record?
They would review all that upon official plan submission for the building itself. So this will go through a full plan check review through the building department.
Okay.
So that would be, that would all be checked, that we have that availability there. But we will start, we can start including that in these conditions.
Question.
I just want to clarify, because I see on the water and sanitary sewer improvements, it looks like, because I was wondering about that adding, if it was going to have any effect on the current. So it looks like that they're gonna be replacing it, removing the existing, and, or is it just partial?
Sure.
Yeah, just lean into it.
All right, I'll get real close to it. Is that better? Okay, my question was the sewer, they have some sewer improvements, water and sewer improvements. So I just wanted to make sure. I wondered if it was for the, for the whole facility or if it was just for additional rooms? Because it looks like they're gonna backfill, abandon and backfill?
Not sure if I see that, because I see the three conditions from water and sanitary.
Right.
Sewer. I thought they were pretty standard conditions.
Are they? I don't know. I'm not, I'm just asking because, you know, when you add on, sometimes that can be an issue if you've ever stayed in a hotel where something doesn't flush.
Right.
Yeah, so the normal, again, on the, the plan check review portion of it through the building department would address that. I can't tell from, the, the condition is any existing sewer lines on the property that will not be used on the new project shall be abandoned and backfilled. So that means if they're abandoning the sewer lines and not connecting into them, that they have the responsibility to, you know, basically backfill those and take them out and not leave them in place. If they install all new sewer systems, then that'll be reviewed through the building permit process as well. But that condition's in there, so if they do abandon the existing system, they have a requirement to go in there and backfill those and not just leave them in place, abandoned.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And my question is, one, just because I'm trying to be better, become better informed. I was wondering why it's a conditional use permit and not a variance, because hotels are allowed in that area.
Correct. Yes, so there is a specific code section where it talks about development standards and it talks about height. And in that section, it specifically says a conditional use permit and not a variance. But you are correct. Usually you would see a variance.
Thank you.
I have one more question. This extension is gonna be connected to the current hotel or?
Correct.
I thought so, but I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, I think that's also comes into play as to why they're requesting the height increase to 38 feet, because it is attached to the existing structure.
And when you say the colors are consistent with the hotel, is that going to be walls or signage? Or how much of a percentage have we ever decided on our colors?
Yeah, so the color proposal is that gray and violet, and that's consistent with the company's branding. I don't know if we have officially decided on colors yet.
Will this come back to the planning commission at any point, or is this, because I'm not really familiar with the process, so this is just the initial design review and then it goes to?
This would be the final decision tonight. If this is approved, then they would be able to pull a building permit, and then they would have to go through all the technical aspects of it.
Do you have a picture of their hotel? The hotel with all the colors on the walls and everything, of what it?
The interior of it or the?
No, the outside. It's gonna be, I mean, that's not really a photograph of, that's, looks like more like a drawing.
Yeah, so that is like the architectural elevations. I know that they're proposing like the gray on a majority of it, and then they're adding a few accents, which is what they're showing here. We don't have any photos, Sims. What was that?
What percentage would be gray?
Um, I was, I was, I was under the understanding that most of it would be the gray color.
Violet's more of a accent. And for the signage.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to come up and speak on this? No? Any other comments who entertain a motion?
I also want to accept this CUP as presented.
Is there a second?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve The Sparks by Hilton Hotel Design Review, file number DR-25-03 and Conditional Use Permit, file number CUP-25-03, 457 North Humboldt Avenue. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Order zero. Okay, thank you. So next up is the public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to speak on these items are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the City Clerk. Comments should be directed to the Chair and Commissioners and are limited to three minutes. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the Council, please give it to the City Clerk for distribution. So I do have a question. Is this public hearing for only Item A at this time?
Correct.
Okay, so it's for Item A, Cali Love.
Good evening. Joe Bettencourt, Community Development and Services Director. I just want to go through a little brief history, kind of how we got to this point and where, where we're at and how we got here, I guess. So in 2017, the Willow City Council adopted Cannabis Ordinance 736, 2017, and that facilitated the approval, regulation and operation of cannabis businesses within the City of Willow's jurisdiction. At that time, there was only certain zones that was allowed in, which were basically the south of Willow's and then along the, the I-5 corridor. After that, we, a resolution was passed in 2024 that removes setback requirements from churches, playgrounds, parks, daycares, and set a 600-foot buffer from K through 12 school districts, preschool through 12 school districts. After that, we opened the, an item up to allow these retail cannabis dispensary businesses in the central commercial, general commercial, and light industrial portions of the City of Willow's. This was brought to the City Council and was passed, and since then, we opened a, kind of an RFP process with the new zones being open to solicit, see if anybody had any interest now that we had some buildings that could be leased instead of built in these areas. And now we received three applications and are presenting two of them today before you guys for conditional use permits. And with that, I'll, I'll pass it over to Delaney Garlick, our planner at Harrison Associates.
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman, and members of the Commission. Thank you, Joe, for that background. Before you today is CUP 25-01.
You're gonna have to speak into the mic a little bit more.
How's that? Better?
Better.
Great. Next slide. Before you is a request for conditional use permit to operate a commercial retail cannabis dispensary in an existing 1,824-square-foot building located at 157 North Butte Street, located within the Central Commercial Zoning District. As you can see on the map, that Central Commercial Zoning District is highlighted there in pink, and the project site is circled there in the red. Next. The proposed location is within the appropriate zone district, as I mentioned, the Central Commercial, which conditionally allows a cannabis retail dispensary use. Additionally, the location of the business meets the setback regulations per Ordinance 760-2024, which took effect on February 12th, 2025, as Joe had previously mentioned in the history. Next. The proposed use, as I mentioned, is within an existing building. It's 1,824 square feet of tenant space. As you can see from the floor plan, this includes a secure entry as well as a main retail area in the open common area and some limited access secure areas for employee areas and storage. The operator has demonstrated compliance with the general provisions, including but not limited to hours of operation, odor control measures, security measures, labeling and packaging inspections, limits on sales, maintenance of licenses and insurance, and accounting of the sales. Next. Just to provide some background on the application process for a retail dispensary cannabis business license, it does consist of three phases. Phase one is, once an application is submitted and deemed complete, and there appears to be no initial basis for denial of the permit, the City Manager will notify the applicant that it can continue on to a phase two. When phase two has been submitted and accepted, the applicant will apply for the CUP, which is where we're at today. This is to be reviewed and decided by the Planning Commission. And then lastly, phase three for the business license process includes bringing forward the issuance of a CUP and the application package to be placed on the next available meeting agenda for the City Council. So just to kind of give you an idea, we went through phase one that was deemed to complete. We've done the significant review of their application package, and we're bringing forth the CUP today. And at a later date, it would move forward to City Council. Next. So with that, the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding existing and future land uses of the Central Commercial District. The project is consistent with many of the general plan policies and the City Council's 2024 priorities and goals. Additionally, the project is categorically exempt from the preparation of CEQA pursuant to Guideline Section 15301, because it's in an existing facility. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit and find the project exempt. And I'll stand for any questions.
We're in the public hearing portion. Is there anyone that would like to comment?
Did you open the public hearing? Should I close it first? You should open it. Did you?
I did open it, and then she started speaking.
Okay, got it. All right. I have one speaker. I have a speaker's card right here. Steven Sutton would like to speak in favor of the project.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Steven Sutton, and I'm here on behalf of Cali Love Willow's, a proposed locally-owned dispensary. I'd like to share why we believe this project will be a positive addition to the City of Willow's. We are not a corporate chain. We're independent, small business owners with deep roots in the California cannabis community. Between my partner and I, we currently operate two successful dispensaries, Cali Love in Weaverville, and we recently opened Cali Love 101 in Prundale, both built from the ground up with community in mind. We've handled every part of our operations ourselves, licensing, compliance, inventory tracking, state inspections, and we passed multiple Department of Cannabis Control inspections with zero violations. We're hands-on operators who know how to do things right. But beyond running a compliant business, we believe in being good neighbors. Our shops are designed to feel upscale, welcoming, and deeply rooted in local community. We feature original art by local artists and create a warm, elevated retail experience that reflects the people and culture around us. We've supported community organizations, local events, youth programs, and nonprofits in Weaverville, and we look forward to doing the same here in Willow's. We also plan to hire locally and provide extensive training to ensure our team is prepared, knowledgeable, and aligned with our values. Our proposal complies with all state and local regulations, including zoning, licensing, security, banking, and advertising. We're not new to this process. We're seasoned, experienced operators who understand what it takes to run a responsible, well-regarded cannabis business. We appreciate that not every dispensary brings the same values or experience to the table. With Cali Love Willow's, we hope to set a positive example, combining small business integrity with community connection and doing it all by the book. Thank you for your time and consideration. We're excited at the possibility of contributing something meaningful and beneficial to the City of Willow's community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other? No? I'll close the public hearing now. So Item A is Cali Love LLC Conditional Use Permit, file number CUP-25-01. Address is 157 North Butte Street. Is there anyone that wishes to come up and speak? You close the public hearing.
Yeah, so you've, you've, you've cut off the public's opportunity to comment on this. It's now the items act with the Commission for your discussion and action.
Oh, okay. I thought I was just opening it up for discussion.
You just closed the public hearing.
I closed it, right, I did. And I just said, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
And you can't do that because you closed the public hearing.
Now it's only the Commission can speak.
Who would like to speak first?
So does she need to reopen the public hearing?
If it is the Chair's intent to elicit further comment from the public, then the public hearing could be reopened, but that's the pleasure of the Chair at this point.
Well, I don't understand, because I just asked if I should close it, and I apologize. This is the first meeting that I have
Okay.
ever ran.
So this is my first time sitting with you, Commission, so I'll give you a little background on how to conduct a public hearing. Generally, what happens is you have staff do the report, then you have the applicant come up and present their side, and then you open the public hearing for the public to comment. And once the public comment has been exhausted, then you close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the Commission for discussion and action.
So I opened it too early.
So, yes, if that was your misunderstanding, that's fine. You can reopen the public hearing if you wish and elicit additional comment, but it is slightly irregular to do so. But because of this misunderstanding from the Chair, I think we'd be in good standing to do that if you wanted to.
I would like to give everyone the opportunity to speak, so I am going to reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
This is the second item. Did you want to, I thought you wanted to speak on? Oh, you wanted to speak on, but okay, that wasn't clear to me. That's why, that's why I came over and asked you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then in that case?
And for clarity, everyone, Chair, that we are still discussing Cali Love.
Discussing Cali Love, yes. Okay, so we're discussing Cali Love. I have another request to speak here from Reverend, Reverend Linda Roberts against this and the next project as well, but she would like to speak now.
Okay.
I think it's globally against, but.
And so Chair, if you're going to do this, you need to open the public hearing formally. Reopen it.
I did open it. I'm not sure if you guys can hear me, or I'll try even to get closer, but I did reopen it.
Okay.
This evening, my name is Reverend Linda Robert. I've been a pastor in your community for almost 12 years. And my number one focus in this community since I have gotten here, and I've been doing this for 30 years with drugs and alcohol, and I'm just here against dispensaries so close to churches and schools. I didn't not know about the first one. I am here to speak about the second one, because the number one problem I have coming through my doors is your young people. And what they have to do to get their drugs, to get what they need from their parents, from their friends, they steal whatever's necessary. And so I am seeing broken homes. I am burying your children. I am helping with broken homes, divorces, separations, all behind what you all are familiar with. I am not helping, nothing you don't know. So I am here to just step up here and say, you folks are opening a wellness center for, Glen County's opening a wellness center for the youth in Orland. So the folks and the kids that are suffering in Willow's have to go to Orland to get the help they need, but not here in Willow's. Where are they gonna go? And so my concern here today is there's people that need whatever they need. Adults can do whatever they want. There's laws that say it's okay. I'm just saying, it's your children, it's your community, it's your people, and as a witness, I'm here to testify. It's hurting, it's suffering. I looked on the number one criminal activity and Willow's, California gets a D for how much criminal activity you have already in your community. So I am just suggesting, use wisdom. Please don't put it by the schools. Please don't make it easier for them. You can't say it's not gonna happen, because I'm here to testify, they got ways you haven't even begun to understand. And they are really genuinely hurting.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
With that, Chair, I think you can close the public hearing once again and then bring the item back for discussion.
I apologize to you. I feel like I'm annoying you.
No, you're not annoying me.
And that's not my intention.
No, you can, there does not appear to be any other public comments, so you can close the hearing and bring that commission for discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, would you like to speak on this?
I'll make a comment. I agree with you, Reverend Roberts. I am a retired pastor of 40-plus years, but I took an oath that I would support the Constitution of California and the United States and our community, the ordinances that we have. I would agree that I don't like it, I don't want it, but I have an obligation to fulfill, and that would be to approve it because I am a planning commissioner. The city council has passed ordinances. Whether I like them or not is not the issue particularly. And I concur with your sentiments, but I'm caught between a rock and a hard place. But I still have to vote, in my mind, for the applicant if they fulfill all of the requirements. One question I had for our attorney, I notice on this, their hours are seven days a week, I believe from, what, nine to seven or something like that. Is it acceptable if we would limit their hours on Sunday out of respect for the churches that are so close to this establishment?
Well, so the conditions have to be based on a reasonable expectation, and I'm not entirely certain that just limiting their hours due to a religious accommodation would be a reasonable condition to place on their operating operation. So unless they were amenable to doing that voluntarily, I don't think you can make that as a condition of their use permit.
Okay. I would think that they have some reasonable accommodation rights also, the churches that are close by.
Well, now you're getting into potential separations of church and state issues. We generally do not provide any special consideration to religious organizations, so.
If the, I don't know if the applicant is present tonight. Yes, one of them is. If that would be something that they would voluntarily agree to, is that acceptable?
I mean, a business can set their hours consistent with, you know, all the applicable laws, and so if they were to voluntarily have reduced hours on Sunday, that's their choice, but again, it's a voluntary option, so they could do that for a while and then decide to come back and, oh, full hours of operation on Sunday. They can, whatever their business needs, set their hours appropriately.
I understand, and I'm trying to be sensitive to both sides when I ask that question.
Sure.
If the applicant would like to address it, that would be fine. If not, that's okay, too.
I actually had a question. I noticed that they're gonna be scanning customer ID cards to verify their age. How will that scanning system be able to identify any fake IDs that kids can easily buy off anybody and make sure that they're actually aged?
Excuse me. Number one, you'd have to come up, but first, I think that we should let Commissioner.
I just want to make sure that we are verifying that these IDs and these adults that are coming through the doors are not actually children or students, high school students coming, because a lot of these students, I know they look older than what they are. So I just want to make sure that their systems are gonna be verifying their IDs, and they are accurate on scanning these. So I just want to make sure that is something that is, I mean, guaranteed, or is it something that we should actually want to make sure so our youth doesn't get?
Well, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, the retail cannabis is heavily regulated by the state through the Department of Cannabis, and from my review of the regulations, they are very onerous, you could only say. And so there are strict requirements for them to verify the identities and the ages of folks purchasing their products. So I don't believe that there's really any issue with that. I mean, they're heavily regulated, and if they were to fail to properly ID, they would face repercussions from the state, just how alcohol, places that sell alcohol have to verify IDs, and if they fail, ABC comes in and there's fines and issues for those businesses that fail to properly identify purchasers.
Would the person from Cali Love like to come up and comment on that?
When you scan an ID in our POS system, it automatically tells you if they're 21 or older, and if the ID's expired. So if it's expired, it doesn't allow, and visually it doesn't match the information on the front, then we will obviously deny because it's a fake or some kind of, you know, thing to pull a scam on us.
So this is an electronic verification?
Yes, sir. And our buttersenders will also visually verify to make sure it matches.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was a good question.
How about if we take the conditional use permit and let's just go through each number? Does anybody up here have a question on number one?
I have a lot of clarifications needed for the.
Are you guys agreeable to let's start with, you know, each? We'll go to number by number, and then if there's no questions, we'll keep moving on. Go ahead, Bobby.
Okay, because there is quite a few, so. And I know that there's already been quite a bit of work done on this, but a lot of my questions are for clarification, and I just noticed some gaps. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding with the additional paperwork that was submitted for delivery. So the type 10 license, so is this storefront able to use the delivery? Is this license that they're getting for retail and delivery? Because it says that there's a proposal for delivery submitted at a later time, which we did receive. So I'm wondering if delivery is part of the license, the current license that will be issued.
So the type 10 licenses would be the type that's issued from the state of California, which is a walk-in dispensary with optional delivery. Our city of Willows municipal code allows for delivery services if there is already existing brick and mortar. You can't just simply do delivery. So that follow-up information, there's specific items that need to be provided in our Willows municipal code related to delivery, mainly safety protocols, and basically how are you gonna keep it as secure as a brick and mortar or as close to that as possible? So our code allows for deliveries if those items are presented within the conditional use permit process, and that was the information provided a week or so ago.
So what is the line, "Any future proposal for storefront retailer-related use such as delivery shall be subject to separate review and approval in accordance with applicable zoning, licensing, and the requirements"? What exactly, what does that mean? Are they going to be making deliveries now, or is that going to be something in the future, and then they'll have to come back? What does that mean?
They would be able to make deliveries as soon as their storefront is operational. That line, I think, is just if they, if any future proposal for a storefront retailer-related use such as delivery shall be subject to separate review and approval in accordance with, so basically if they come back and this applicant is a different storefront or different delivery service or changes anything that is not included within this proposal, that would require a separate review.
Yeah, just to concur with Joe, that the license does include the storefront with delivery, and that line is just to ensure if it were to change ownership or change business, they'd have to come back.
I noticed in the delivery that it's gonna be within the city limits, so our city limits are not that big. So how far out is it gonna be? Is the delivery gonna take place, or would it be better rather than to say the city limits, the sphere of influence?
I think Glen County has their own rules regarding cannabis delivery, and each jurisdiction has their own specific rules related to that, so they would need to abide by those specific jurisdiction rules.
So if they go outside the city limits, they have to go through the planning commission of the county?
They would need to ensure that they've got proper, yes, authority to do that, and I believe that Glen County does not allow delivery. I could be wrong on that some, quite a while back, and I'm kind of going off memory here, but they put it to every jurisdiction to decide whether they're gonna allow outdoor cultivation, deliveries, or transportation through their areas. So each jurisdiction, I believe, still has the ability to control those individual items.
So, Joe, if they can do this, then why do we have it in here that it's, it will be subject to a separate review and approval if they can already do it?
That would be a future proposal for a storefront or related use such as delivery. So any future, if they were going, if the applicant was going to propose a different storefront or any of those things, it would not be included in this.
For our third dispensary?
What's that?
It would be for our third dispensary?
If they chose to have any future project, it would be subject to a separate review. So basically stating if any, they wanted to do anything else besides what this property address is doing, if they wanted to open up anything, we're not saying that because we're giving you these conditions of approval, that if you get another license somewhere else, these are your, they'll start this whole process over if they chose to do it at a different location or any of those things. If they moved down the block, we would start this process over. This is very specific to this location and these applications, so.
Does the commission have any other questions on? Go ahead.
No, that cleared it up for me. Thank you, Joe.
In terms of the burglar alarm and the video surveillance, is there going to be some type of a backup battery if the power should go out?
I don't have information on that. I don't know, I know there's certain standards related to the quality and the, how the security cameras work, but I don't have specific information on a battery backup unless it's in the packet.
Well, we usually have some power outages during the winter months, and it could be an hour, a couple hours. One time it was multiple days, so that's why I asked that question.
No, absolutely.
I think it's to their advantage to have some type of backup because their keypads to get in and out won't work either.
Yeah, I'd have to, I would have to look into that if it was specific to their system or if there's a requirement by the Department of Cannabis Control.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, we do have condition eight that requires to maintain commercial alarm monitoring system and video surveillance in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations. So it's more of a blanket statement, but we are requiring them through the conditions that they have to maintain it to the different levels.
So they would have to have a battery backup?
I'm going to assume that, but I don't know the state and federal requirements for the cannabis retail off the top of my head to confirm that.
Okay. Do you have one more?
No, I just wondered if we shouldn't know that, so that shouldn't be stated, but go ahead, though. I'm fine with one.
Okay. So condition two, are there any questions from the commission? Not condition. Do you have any? No, Bobby?
For two, no, I think you kind of covered the license issue.
Keith, do you have any questions? I'm wondering what the certificate of authorization is, why it's required in addition to the city license?
Yeah, so that is actually required by the code, that the city authorization basically is the city council granting the approval of the license.
Any others?
So are there any require, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Are there any requirements for that certificate of authorization?
It would be every step that we're going through now, so they would be that we review the phase one application, we review the phase two application, get to where we're at now. You guys approve the CUP, would get them to the next step of being reviewed by city council. If city council approves with their conditions, whatever those may be, then that would indicate that they've received the authorization. So basically, these steps outlined in council approval would be the certificate of authorization.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding number three?
I do not have any.
Okay. Number four? Go ahead and take.
I do have one.
Okay.
And again, this is just clarification about the written exemption. Let's see here. I just wondered what the, if there are any limitations, or I guess, what would require it coming back to the commissioners, or what is, you know, the line of exemption that city manager would sign off on?
I think the line would be anything that would affect the three areas that we're looking at for the conditional use permit. So what we wanted to do is really try to lock it in so you guys would have a good understanding of how this, how this looks with the security system. Say the specific security system they were going to install was not available or done, and they need to say, hey, we can't install that system. It's a part of our conditional use permit. We need to install a new one that's like or different. The city manager would be able to authorize that kind of internal variance, so.
So it would be for an upgrade or additional?
Yeah, or if we can't, but anything that would, you know, the security system. So basically, that line says that everything that you put into your proposal, we want you to use those systems. So if you stated that you're gonna use a very specific detailed system within this application, we're gonna verify it through this line because it's now a part of the conditions of approval, and we've got attachment one that lists all these systems. But if there's extenuating circumstances, they don't make the system, or we need a variation of, then the city manager would be able to approve that variation of a system, lighting, as long as it met code, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Number five?
I do want to make note on this condition. If we were to modify hours of operations, this condition of approval would need to, the language would need to be modified. And just to note, the hours of operations are provisions in the municipal code, so those hours that were put in here are directly from the code. So those are stated development standards listed in the cannabis section of code.
And those hours are more stringent than the allowable by the state. So I think it's, the state has a 9:00 PM maybe, or a 10:00 PM?
Yeah.
Where this would shut down between the hours of 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM.
And 8:00 AM.
Sorry, thank you.
And just to clarify, they can make delivery with this? Is there any other questions?
No, I did not.
And deliveries would be held to the same hours of the operation of the brick and mortar as well.
Number, you said you had another?
No, I do not.
Number six? Any questions? Any questions? Number seven?
Oh, I, I do have a question on this one, Chair. So I just want to be clear that when it says no productions, there's no manufacturing being done in this space. Is that correct?
The statement would be that these are not visible from the exterior of the building.
But production meaning you're labeling manufacturing?
I don't think.
Grow in the back room? That is.
I think those lines would be covered in, in other pieces of our code or the, the state license. I think this sentence speaks specifically to being visible from the exterior of the building.
But what I'm asking is that there is not going to be any manufacturing, growing marijuana in the facility.
This is, it's not.
It's just retail.
Retail, yeah. This is an M10 license through the state. So it would be only for cannabis retail sales and delivery. Not a cultivation permit or, or anything of that nature.
Any other questions? Number eight? So should we attach condition one to condition eight? I mean, should we include everything that's in condition one with condition eight? Or is it okay that it's just separate? For the security measures, maintain a commercial alarm monitoring system and video surveillance system in accordance with local, state and federal regulations because it's a security measure. Should we also put everything else in there? Or is that?
Sorry, combine number eight with what? Which other condition?
I think that's more of a measurement.
Yeah. Okay. I'm rereading it.
Yeah. So that's more of a measurement for the.
Okay. Okay. Number nine? Does anyone have anything on number nine? Number 10?
I do have a question again about the labeling. Is it prepackaged all the product? It is? And I know it, not at this time. I'm not really familiar with the federal part of all this, but no.
Number 11?
I just have a big question there. Who will be doing the inspections? If there were to be one, who would that be?
Most likely this would be either code enforcement requesting the records. Most of it has to do with, with financial records as well. So depending on what apartment records are being requested from.
The finance department as well as code enforcement.
We really don't have code enforcement in our city right now.
We, we do have a building inspector who wants to take care of code enforcement violations.
But after hours, there's a lot, we've discussed it before, the different vendors on the streets and just different things. It's been discussed here. Joe's mentioned that it's been hard to.
It's, it's hard to patrol. There's also a whole separate.
This particular item though, there's somebody.
Department of Cannabis Control.
Five days a week from eight to five. And if it's an inspection, those are pretty good hours. Those are 40 hours in a week that inspection could be done by code enforcement or the finance department.
And we kind of look at this as something similar to, we don't regulate alcohol or tobacco. The ATF does that. So we have a Department of Cannabis Control, but this does give us some local authority to go request records for that, right? So we're not going to go make sure that they have the right amount of marijuana that they're supposed to be under. That's not within our jurisdiction. What we would want to see is that you're accurately reporting your sales to us, that you're, you're living by your conditions of approval, which would fall under the code enforcement part of it. But as far as regulating the actual cannabis business, that would not be a part of what we do here.
Any other comment on 11? Okay, 12? You have any questions? No? I'm curious. I do have a question. So is the retail dispensary license that's referred to here, the city license or the state license? And if it's the city, why do they also need a general business license?
It's written in our Willow's municipal code that they shall obtain a city of Willow's business license in addition to the retail cannabis license.
Is that for all businesses or just for cannabis?
Well, any business would need a business license. This is just stating that, that this retail cannabis business license does not cover you on a city of Willow's business license. You also need to acquire that in addition to. Every business needs to have a city of Willow's business license.
Right.
This is saying you need to have one as well in addition to this cannabis retail license.
Are there any other questions? Number 13?
I was just curious about one thing on here because I, I just thought it was interesting about the insurance coverage. No, I just, well, I was a little surprised at it, naming the city of Willow's officials, employees and attorneys and additionally are insured. Is that normal practice or is it just because of the type of business that it is?
I'll defer to the attorney on this. As I understand it is due to the type of business that it is. And this is also a piece of the Willow's municipal code that's specifically hard written into it as well. But
this is, these amounts of coverage and the parties covered are fairly standard for businesses of this type. As Joe mentioned, it's hardcoded into the Willow's code. So because the city council put that into the code, that's why it's, this is here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Seems like a liability.
In what way?
I just don't know why they would be named. I, I don't quite understand that, why they would be linked that way. Do they need to annually provide proof that they do have their insurance?
They would have to maintain at all times the insurance levels. And so if they, they fail to, that'd be a violation of the conditional use permit, which could, you know, face potential revocation proceedings on that basis. It would be part of the inspections if we added any concerns about coverage being lapsed, if they weren't paying the bills.
Thank you. Item 14? Is this found in most, is item 14 found in most CUPs?
Again, it's, this is more tied to the type of business. I mean, there is the possibility that, you know, some individual may be, for example, be over served. It's a context that you may have heard with alcohol businesses where someone consumes a substance that they obtained from a proprietor and they may in turn try to sue both the proprietor and the city or the entity that authorized that proprietor to operate. So these are provisions that basically, you know, provide coverage for the city if that potentiality were to occur.
Anybody have any comments on that or questions? 15? 16? Do you have any on 16?
I just was kind of questioning what the 5% or more in a single transaction was, any change in ownership? What does, what does that mean?
I would just take that to mean that if it, any portion of the business is sold or transferred to a person that's not currently listed. But then this application, that they would need to notify the city manager in writing of that change?
That was under item 16?
That, yeah, 16.
Item 17? Any question?
No.
Item 18?
Just the fact that it has manufacturer in that? That was another concern of mine. This business sell or manufacture edible cannabis? This is just a retail space, correct? So I'm not sure why manufacturer is in there. Does a state inspect? Yeah. If you wouldn't mind, does the state inspect you on a regular basis or are you held to a different standard than some of the things that we're talking about here? If you were to have, for instance, have to notify the city manager of any violation or corrective action? You know, what, what does a state do since you have a couple of stores, if you wouldn't mind?
They inspect generally on a yearly basis and they're surprise inspections just to make sure you're being compliant. And also for further clarification, they don't allow manufacturing at retail dispensaries. There's a specific manufacturing license where it's done separately.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
It seems like that shouldn't be in there then? Or why is it in here?
I think the note here is that whether you're a business, business that sells or manufactures, you're required to get the Glen County Health Department. It's.
But since they can't do that, why would we include it?
It was, it's.
It's a boilerplate condition.
Yeah. I think that's the, I don't know, is that, that one codified in there? We can strike that from this application though. I don't see a reason.
The city attorney and I just talked about it. If you want to strike it, you can strike the word manufacturer.
It is a surplus. I mean, it doesn't necessarily make sense in the context here. They are just a retailer, but also it's a, it does not open the door for them to become a manufacturer because they're not licensed from the state to be a manufacturer either. So it's, you can strike it or you can leave it. It's not that they have.
I, I understand that it does, it seems very minor to you, but it is in this small town, very controversial. So just questioning it a little bit, you know, I hope you have a little patience with that because we do, we are community members and we speak for the community. So asking these questions I think are relevant and should be heard. And nothing is too minimal to question. So asking about manufacturing because it's two different things in my book and, and this is already a very high level issue for this community. We've, we've been suffering a lot as it is to bring business in. So cannabis was not at the top of the list for a lot of people. So, you know, that is why we're asking a lot of questions. So I hope you just be patient and understand that.
Sure. It would have been appreciated though, if you had so many questions that you could have given them ahead of time because this is a, a rather lengthy process. And I'm assuming since the conditional use permit for the second item, once we get to that, we're not going to be going through the.
Most of these conditions are the same, but to be fair to us, we received this after 5:30 PM on Friday night, which didn't give us a lot of time. We all have jobs and, and the packets that we received are really large. And we've in the past voted for things or voted down things and they've changed. So I hope you'll understand that piece of it too. And I actually am thankful that everybody sitting up here is taking this seriously and I would hope they would take everything seriously.
And just to clarify, just another point. So that is the way that it read in the code. It had manufacturer on there. So I was taken straight from the code, but no issue striking that out of it as if it does not relate to this. It is actually listed in our retail cannabis dispensary license code with not in the manufacturing portion of it. So that's probably a code adjustment that we need to make when we do our, our review as well. Because it is listed under the retail cannabis license application portion of it.
Thank you, Joe.
So you are taking that out? Is that my understanding then?
Yeah, I think we're fine with that. If that's.
What, what are you taking out?
The word manufacturer. So the, the Willow's municipal code reads, and this is under the city of Willow's authorizes, subject to conditions set forth in this code and only in zones in which such sales are permitted, uses permitted under title 18, the commercial sale of cannabis and cannabis products for medical and non-medical uses. Such authorization and license issued hereunder does not include the sale or manufacturing of cannabis or cannabis products at any location other than for which the license is issued by the city of Willow's. And then number B under that states cannabis businesses that sell or manufacture edible cannabis products shall have valid Glen County health permit. Permit holders shall comply with health and safety code section 13700 of the Glen County health permit requirements. Such requirements provide a system of prevention and overlapping safeguards designed to minimize foodborne illness, ensure employee health, demonstrate industry manage, manager knowledge, ensure base safe food. Some other stuff we didn't include that was shown on the strike through that was provided. So it, it's listed that way under our retail cannabis code. So that's why it was included as a, a pretty much a copy paste in there because the code states that under this provision. But as the city attorney stated, I don't think there's any issue taking out the word manufacturer if you guys want to do that.
Thank you.
Any further comments on that one? 19?
Excuse me, Chair, just to confirm, did you want to remove that from the condition, manufact, the word manufacturer?
Yes, that's what we just asked. Well, if, do you all agree with that or?
I mean, you don't have to vote on it, but I'd like a consensus. No, that's.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay, 19? Is there anything on 19? 20? No. I, I do have some on 20. Will the CUP run concurrently with the city issued license and how long is it good for?
Let me confirm.
I have kind of a follow-up question also when you're ready.
Joe, I don't know if you can speak to the frequency of business licenses. That's an annual?
The business license portion or the, the cannabis applic, business license?
Yeah, if both of those are.
So the, the business license would run each year. The term of a, so it speaks to the return, the term of a renewed retail dispensary cannabis license shall be two years. And I'm looking.
Does it coincide with the state issued license? Is it, are they both the same? Do they run?
No, I, I wouldn't think so.
How often will it come back to the planning commission for review?
Once the conditional use permit has been issued, it would not come back to the planning commission unless there is proceedings to revoke it.
Do you mind, would you mind stating that one more time? Cause I couldn't understand everything you said.
So once, if the commission issues the conditional use permit, it would not come back to the commission for review again. it would not come back to the commission for review again unless the city initiated proceedings to revoke it.
Thank you. And then I guess I'm just curious, um, it says in here that the fees must be submitted to the city manager at least ninety days before the expiration of the then-current license. Failure to submit a renewal application at least ninety days prior to the expiration date of the then-current license will result in the automatic expiration of the license on the expiration date. Are we actually going to do that?
If it's a condition of approval, yes, we would.
So there's no grace period? And then if the license automatically expires, then I'm assuming they would close?
Well, they would be, uh, they would have to cease operations to maintain compliance with the law. I would assume that, uh, the applicant would do so. But, um, you know, that would be a eventuality, that we'd have to see what would happen. If they were to continue operating without a license, then there would be issues from both the state and from the city.
And back to the, so there's a, the initial term of the license is, is a one-year term, and then the renewals are two years.
And with that, they have to submit ninety days before the automatic?
Yes, it's written in the code, it's an automatic expiration if they do not apply for the renewal within ninety days of the expiration date.
The business will close, correct? Do you send out notices ninety day, or a hundred days before the ninety days? Or how do we monitor that? Who monitors that?
For the business license?
Ninety days before it's due, did they get like a bill or does something come, a letter, something?
We do send out renewals for business licenses annually.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
I just have one question, because I was going by what he said about the state doing inspections. Do you, and I'm not sure, I saw this on here where we plan on doing, and it's just because of the type of business that it is, any kind of annual review or follow-up? You know, I know you said DOF could, could, uh, inspect or whatever, but there would have to be a reason. Is there just any kind of plan to have an annual review to make sure things are the way they should be? Or should there be?
I'm not aware off the top of my head of what the, the state's inspection schedule is, um, generally speaking.
You know, like when they, do they let the city know when they've done an inspection and give them?
No.
No. You know, if the city were to institute a, an inspection program of their own for these, these businesses, I mean, that's something that the city would have the authority to do, to institute some sort of inspection program. Um, I'm not aware of the plans for such at the moment.
And I think where we talk about, you know, inspection, it's more of an, in financial records, um, which we could do at any time. Um, we do it in other instances with, you know, working out sales tax and TOT, um, you know, to confirm the information. Basically, we can pull and audit financial information at any point in time.
Thank you. Okay, twenty-one? You have something on twenty-one, please?
I think so, that's about the not, a business license, non-transferable? Uh, my question is, generally a CUP is transferable. So which, um, holds the most weight? This says a business license is not, is non-transferable. So we're talking about a business license per se and not the CUP?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other on twenty-one?
That's all I have.
Twenty-two? I'm curious how the city, what's the process for reasonable notice if you want to go in and enter and inspect? If an enforcement officer has reason to believe, what's, what's the process there? Sure, I'm sorry. I want to know what the city process for, provide reasonable notice of the need to enter inspect is.
It says at any reasonable time.
Like twenty-four hours?
Like twenty-four hours, so is that what it's going to be, twenty-four hours?
It says any reasonable, but I would say like usually that's what we would consider reasonable would be with twenty-four hour notice.
I think it would be really dependent upon what the alleged, uh, violation that needs the, the inspection. What necessitates the inspection? Reasonable is a, an elastic standard, depending upon what the violation or the reason for the inspection. Twenty-four hours is probably the most, most likely reasonable amount of notice, but if it was a more severe, uh, issue, uh, could be less. You know, I'll note, this, this is the, literally the first CUP for one of these businesses. So the city has not really established what a reasonable, uh, notice would be, because we've not, we don't have one.
Right, that's why we have questions.
Oh, listen. How is a nuisance defined? It doesn't give any illustration of that. It just says nuisance.
Probably as it's defined in the, the Willow's municipal code. As I think this again is taken out of the Willow's municipal code directly.
Well, and so, I mean, Joe's correct, and, and the definitions for what would be a nuisance would be found in the Willow's code. But also, I mean, it would be any nuisance in particular to this business would be any potential violations of either their CUP or any state or local, other local regulations regarding the operation of the business would constitute being a nuisance. So it is, uh, frankly, it is kind of elastic and a little bit open-ended, but it kind of needs to be in order to give the city the ability to come in, uh, and take a look at what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Item number twenty-three? I think she already asked.
I, I, excuse me, I just wanted to point out, I don't know if, if the commission was aware of this, but most of the conditions of approval are actually in the city's cannabis section, chapter nine point two oh. They lifted them literally from already the approved ordinance from the city that's on the city's website. And I wasn't sure if you were aware of that. And then at the end, those ones that are specific from fire at the end of the conditions, those were taken from the department specifically, but almost all the conditions are in the current cannabis ordinance that's online for the city.
Thank you, I think it's okay though, if we still have questions and want clarification.
I don't disagree, I just didn't know if you knew that it wasn't like we just sort of made it up, that, I mean, it came from an approved document, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not implying that you made anything up, at all. Not at all. Item number twenty-four? Item number twenty-five? Item number twenty-six? Item number twenty-seven? Does Kelly Love have a standalone entry?
Joe, if you want to pull up the forefront-
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if I saw that or-
A secured, uh, entry that you requires going through the security and ID verification before you get to the actual retail area.
Okay, thank you. Item number twenty-eight? Anything? I'm assuming item twenty-eight refers to the exterior, not the interior? Is that correct?
So the line review is, is still to come? Is that correct?
Correct, today is just for the conditional use permit.
Item twenty-nine? Item thirty? Thirty-one? Thirty-two? Thirty-three?
Are, are, what are all plans? That was my only question, is what does that include, all plans? Is that just a general statement in case there's additional?
Look, I'm gonna, sorry.
Yeah, that's referring to any, any future plans for the use of the storefront, like, uh, just coming up with an idea. If they wanted to start serving coffee, that's a different use than what we're looking at, they would have to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Item thirty-four? Do they even have landscaping?
Yes, so I think they, in their proposals, the, um, listed putting potted plants out in the front of it. Um, and then, um, yeah, there, there's mentioned a, a plant, land, not necessarily landscaping, but having potted plants out on the, the front of the, the building.
Item thirty-five? Thirty-six? And thirty-seven?
Just a quick question, so any changes in hours, days, or operating procedures, will that be reported to the city manager?
With the community development department, yeah, and then I'll be notified.
What was that, Marty, I'm sorry? Are you the community development department?
I, I'm not, it's Joe.
Oh, okay, sorry, Joe.
No, here, I don't know how I got in that one either. If you want to change that to city manager, I would be-
It's structured here, so if he knows, I'll know.
So does any changes like that come back to planning or no? Is it not necessary?
I mean, through these general conditions, we're listing the, the hours of operations, um, within the code, you know, so we kind of go back to that, no operating after, and I'm going to mess it up again, because I'm not looking at it, whatever the set times are now, um, so-
Just because that, that's happened, one of the first meetings I was here, a business wanted to extend their hours, um, so they came before the planning commission, so I wondered if that-
That was a specific voluntary condition that they took on themselves, um, and-
The condition that's already here though, is the maximum that's permitted under the code, right?
Correct.
So they can't go anymore, they could go less, but it probably won't happen.
Yeah, and, yeah, that, the reference to the, that was a voluntary condition, they chose not to stay open to two, to kind of alleviate concern of, of some other issues that were addressed with that, and then-
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're, under building department, is there any number here that any of you would like to discuss? Thirty-eight? Thirty-nine? Forty? Forty-one? And forty-two? And under the fire department, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six? Is there anything that you guys would like to bring up and discuss?
No. That's pretty standard.
And on the back page? Forty-seven through fifty-one? Anything there? Okay, and Glen County Environmental Health Department, fifty-two, is there anything there? Do you have any other further comments? Mr. Attorney, is it okay if I ask the public if they have anything further they'd like to add?
Well, you've closed the, the public hearing, so it would be inappropriate to, to solicit additional public comment, public comment. You brought the item back to you for discussion and action.
Okay, thank you.
And so, commission, I will just, you know, gently remind you, you know, when you are reviewing a conditional use permit, you're sitting in basically in a quasi-adjudicary, adjudicary position. Basically, that means that you need to review the project and the application in a non-biased manner, and you're supposed to, uh, basically make a determination on whether or not the information provided, uh, in the application meets criteria for, uh, the issuance of the conditional use permit. You know, the staff report provides findings establishing that, um, the application appears to meet all criteria for the issuance of a conditional use permit. And so, um, with that, you know, if the commission were inclined to deny the conditional use permit, you would have to do that based on specific findings. And at this point, from my review, I'm not entirely certain what those findings would be, but to deny the conditional use permit for any reason that's not supported by findings would be basically arbitrary and capricious, and that could potentially lead, uh, expose the commission and the city, the potential litigation and liability. So I just wanted to throw that out there, just that, I know this is a high, uh, high-level issue for this community, but you, you need to be dispassionate and non-biased in your decision-making.
I don't like anything you just said, because as a commissioner, I have a right to vote how I want to vote. And, and they have a right to appeal it to the city council.
Well, and again, you have the right to, uh, deny the application if there's findings, and if you deny without findings, that is arbitrary and capricious, exposing the commission and the city to liability. So I'm just addressing that, you know, I think, uh, Commissioner Brott put it, or not Commissioner Brott, Forum, put it best, you know, you may have personal opinions about this dispensary, but you have to follow the law, and because this is quasi-adjudicary, adjudicatory position for proceedings, you have to provide the applicant due process.
I think that we are providing that, I think it's fair that we ask questions. I also don't personally, personally, even though this isn't a personal item, I don't have a problem with, um, because I feel like you're insinuating that because of the questions, I don't have a problem with this type of business. What I have a problem with is the location. And we originally had, um, a different, we said no, nothing downtown. The planning commission said that. And when I go back to the minutes, the minutes say that we declined to recommend any changes, the minutes don't really reflect what happened that night. We made it clear that we wanted the zone to stay the same, we made it clear. In fact, I left that meeting that night feeling really good, thinking, I think we're all in agreement, we're agreeing with what the city's boundaries are. I felt good about that actual meeting. And then the next city council meeting, they changed the zones, because they want this. So in some regards, I almost still dumped on, so I will vote. I'm all for businesses coming to Willow's in the proper location. So I will, my vote will reflect that, and if I need to leave the planning commission after that, that's fine. But I will vote based on that, not based on whether or not I like marijuana.
Well, there's no insinuation with my comments, I'm just pointing out the, the requirements for the process here. And so certainly any individual commissioner can vote however you wish. But if you are going to vote to den- but if you are going to vote to deny the application specifically, you need to do so based on specific findings of fact that the application does not meet requirements under the applicable city codes, SEQA, general consistency with the general plan, things of that nature.
Can I just motion to approve this Kelly Love conditional use permit?
Yes. Is there a second?
I feel that they're meeting all the requirements.
Is there a second? Motion dies.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Chair Brot.
No.
Vice Chair Quorum.
Aye.
Commissioner Ocampo.
Aye.
Commissioner Nygaard.
I'm gonna say I do appreciate everybody's comments and business owner being here to support. Before I give my vote, I do want to say that it felt a little threatening for you to, and even though I know you're doing your job, and you're right, we are trying our best not to be biased, but I don't want to be threatened to vote a certain way. I took this job on to be a community member and participate in this town. I do have a full-time job, and I do my best to educate myself before I came here. So I want you to know that we are doing our best to do our due diligence to understand. And I agree with Chair Brot that I didn't get all of the information, some of it did go to my personal email, I didn't catch it at the time, but I did my best to catch up before I came here. And certainly would have met with Joe or a city manager to ask questions had I had time. That being said, just because that it does follow all the application rules, I will say yes.
Motion passes three to one. Okay, so we have another public hearing. This time it's for item B, WWCRS Incorporated Conditional Use Permit, CUP 25-02, 130 North Butte Street.
Chair, I have a question. So are we so I'm not in favor of having two cannabis retail stores in the town of Willows, so is this just to, again, because it looks like we copy and pasted the same
Conditions?
Conditions, thank you, for this one, and there's really no reason to go over it again.
Well, there's more added on the other one. They have more conditions.
Okay.
I believe, right, I think.
Yeah, the added conditions are-
I don't think we have to go through everything we went through.
Yeah, they're related to Public Works, was the additional department that had conditions for this particular location based on the type of tenant space it is? Would you like me to proceed with the presentation?
Sure.
Hey, I'll try to keep it brief since there is going to be a lot of redundancies or similarities between these two projects. But just want to note, the item before you is CUP 25-02, a request for conditional use permit to operate a commercial retail cannabis dispensary in an existing building with 1,803 square feet located at 130 North Butte Street. Next. Again, the proposed location is within the appropriate zone district of Central Commercial, which conditionally allows a cannabis retail dispensary. Next. And as you can see here, this project location is located on the east side of Butte Street, just south of the project that we just heard. And the proposed use, like I mentioned, is within an existing tenant space with 1,803 square feet. As you can see from the floor plan, we do have a secure entry down in the southeast corner, followed by a main retail common area and centrally located, and then in the northwest corner, you have that secure employee area, storage area as well. Next. Again, similar permit process, the three phases, just to remind you, phase one is completed. Phase two is where we're at today with the conditional use permit. Following this step, a phase three would be that city council reviewing and approving the whole business license package, including the CUP. That's before you today. Next. And again, just to state, the proposed, the operator has demonstrated compliance with all the general provisions, including but not limited to the hours of operations, the odor control measures, security measures, labeling, packaging, inspection, limit of sales, maintenance of licenses and insurance, and accounting of the sales. This is going to be very similar to the previous project with similar conditions. I will note there are added conditions from Public Works based on the specific site location. And then lastly, I would recommend that the commission approve the conditional use permit, find the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to guideline 15301 for existing facility, and that the proposed project is compatible and compliant with the general plan as well as the city council's priorities and goals. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Attorney, so I don't do it wrong, I can open it up to the public?
You, if there's a representative from the applicant present, they can come by, come up and address the commission, and once they've done that, you can then open it to public hearing.
Is there someone here from?
Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Sharkey. I am the applicant. Thank you, first of all, for listening. I know it's a very difficult subject and hard for Willows, but as a long-term property owner here in the city, I have been advocating for any type of business that will bring traffic to the downtown. Downtown has struggled. In 2003, the Willows had a downtown revitalization was put together. I can't remember who did it, but that was 22 years ago. 22 years ago, and downtown retail businesses still struggle and close, and struggle and close, because there's no way to bring traffic from I-5 downtown. When I-5 was put in, it bypassed the entire downtown. So the downtown is beautiful, it's quaint, so I'm gonna just give a quick little summary here, and so you know, a lot of information on the application regarding my past. I currently do have a approved micro business in Sacramento, went through a very similar process, meeting with residents, meeting with the support of the city, the support of the police, to have that approved, it was difficult. But today it's running and people, there's not a single problem coming in. The state comes in whenever they want, the city comes in whenever they want, the code enforcement comes in whenever they want. This is one of the most regulated businesses you can have in the state. And many are failing. Right now, many, there's more licenses that have been revoked or surrendered than there are active right now because it is such a complicated and stringently regulated business. So my issue is, in 2003, the downtown revitalization plan, one of the main focuses was tourism marketing to stimulate increased tourism activity, and offering a theme that would work well when promoting the city of Willows on a regional basis. Since that time, it has been a struggle downtown, we all know that. But what I wanted to say is, green zones or clustered dispensaries have a lot of benefits. I'm just gonna review a few of them for you. And the principal goal for visitors to retail dispensaries in Willows will be to increase local revenue to businesses and promote general economic development in the downtown. Locating a green zone in the downtown will ensure highway visitors do more than stop and buy gas and a hamburger at the highway exit. It will create the discovery of a historic central downtown to all highway travelers and visitors. And the opportunity to locate a retail dispensary in the downtown will facilitate local business sales, new business opportunities, and provide for significant economic growth in the central commercial zone, which has languished for years due to its distance from I-5 and the competition of the Super Walmart course. Downtown businesses struggle. So some of the benefits are increased pedestrian and vehicle traffic to the downtown, increased ancillary consumer spending in adjacent businesses, and encourage new businesses to openings. It will create a specific district that will attract more visitors. It will become a destination for tourism, boosting local revenue. Businesses will increase revenue, and this activity will trigger new businesses' openings and sustain existing struggling businesses in the downtown. One of the goals is to provide synergy with all downtown businesses. People come in, they need to get something to eat, they need to shop, they need to do things like that. Our goal is to assist in internal referrals to the local merchants. And the other side is, it's when the city of Willows allowed two dispensary licenses, it initially doesn't make sense to have both downtown, but first-time buyers or buyers in general feel more comfortable in an area where there are multiple dispensaries, many, many small cities, and you can go and look at them there across the street in many small downtown places. The other issue is it provides for enhanced safety and regulation, because a district, it helps with police patrol, it helps with private monitoring, cameras, and city compliance also. And so just wanted to really bring, my biggest push has been for downtown commercial businesses that just really struggle. They can't make it, they're hanging on by their fingernails because they don't have enough revenue coming in because there's nothing to bring traffic down. I mean, give me another suggestion. Anyway, I'd like to have George say a minute here.
Thank you.
A lot of experience can answer many questions for you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to first try to appease the concerns that you guys have. I know that when it's such a new entity and there's concerns that the kids are gonna get access to it. We run seven dispensaries throughout the state of California. We have some in Crescent, we have one in Crescent City. We have two in Lake County, and I would encourage you guys, if you guys would want to go and check one out and see how it operates and see how the traffic is. In none of the places that we've operated, we've ever had any issues with local law enforcement. On the contrary, local law enforcement has came to us to get video from our cameras because of incidents that happened on the street. We have to maintain 90 days of video, and that has to be maintained. DCC, the Department of Cannabis Control, if you don't have access to it, they will find you. So it provides a safety to the community around. On top of that, we have certified security guards that not only help us, but they also assist our neighbors. So in most of the, in all the locations that we operate in, we have a really good relationship with our neighbor in Pacifica. We're off of Rockaway, which is a very touristy area where a lot of people come in. They were across the street, Chamber of Commerce. They love us. So, and I feel that that's something that we can do here, working with the community.
I can say we're very, very aware of the community of Willows, and our goal is to work with them directly. We're not an island. And to give you some reassurance that this is normal, you have to have this presence, but it's a business, it's a regular business, but any business is just very highly regulated. Of course, all the regulations we have are very clear. And it could not affect children. Children are number one ultimate priority to not be affected by it, and I know that it's big in some ways, but that's a very regulated society. And like this, we're achieving Willows passing ordinance, allowing to be sent there. Both of the candidates are the upper tent of offices to be evaluated. Evaluation and
And if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them for you. Like I said, I've been doing this in the cannabis industry for seven years regulated. We opened up our first dispensary in 2009, and there was no rules. Everything was being made up by the city, by the government, by us, the business owners. So through those whole years, we've maintained and kept that same dispensary, which is to show that we've grown with regulations. We've maintained a really good relationship even when there was no rules in the city, and we're still there. I think we're an asset to the city. We bring in tons of tax revenue, which is what we hope to do here. But like I said, if you guys have any questions, specifically against like regulations, the cameras, the money handling, I'm more than happy to-
I asked a question earlier, and since you have several businesses, what do you do for a power outage to keep your security cameras going? Do you have a battery backup?
So at one locations, we do have a battery backup. We own the building, so we put in a Genetek backup power generator. The other locations are not our buildings, so we have power generators that we've used before in the past to, one, keep the business going, and two, maintain all the cameras. The cameras have a 30-minute power backup, but unless you have an actual power generator, like a heavy-duty one, it's gonna be really hard to keep longer than an hour on the cameras. It's a lot of equipment. We successfully, we had blackouts in like Vallejo, and we were successfully able to use the generator, maintain the footage going for the whole system, and usually the central alarm systems, they do have like a 24-hour backup battery in them because they're smaller systems. And us being more concerned, we're gonna, usually if we have, if we can't get the cameras to work and the security system's not working, we're gonna send a 24-hour security guard to stay there while, even if it's closed, just to secure the location, because we have more to lose than anybody.
Yep. Are you gonna put a generator in this location?
I think-
I'm sorry.
That hasn't come up yet.
Okay.
We'll definitely have a backup generator, but adding a whole new generator on the top, I think that's something that we're gonna have to discuss.
It'll depend on how many power outages we have.
Anything else?
It's just, you know, I just wanted to say that cannabis industry has evolved over time, and it's not what a lot of people perceive it used to be. And that's why it's worth it to take field trips and really walk in and take a look. They are high-end, highly regulated, and they don't spill out into the community. You know, there's nobody, there's no loitering. Even you could put signs up, and people don't loiter. They don't, but my goal is, there's beautiful restaurants downtown, shops downtown that the community here endures, but outsiders don't even know it exists. And that's like really critical for the downtown for growth. Of course, revenue stream for the city is critical, we know that, and we've seen it happen in other communities, that the city has benefited into a very large discretionary fund that they're able to utilize.
And I think one of the concerns is the safety of it. If you go to any like bigger city, you go to a dispensary and spend 10 minutes outside, go to a 7-Eleven and spend 10 minutes outside, tell me where you would rather be, and it's not gonna be the 7-Eleven because there's no security. Usually there's people loitering around, and that is just something that doesn't happen with a dispensary, especially because of the cameras. You have cameras outside, criminals and people that are doing stupid things do not want to do it in front of a camera. And that's one of the benefits. I mean, a lot of the other businesses downtown don't have as much security as these places. And these cameras have to be accessible to law enforcement and the Department of Cannabis Control. And it's something that has to be maintained for 90 days. I mean, that 90 days alone is a long time to maintain.
Any other questions?
It's difficult. I did, in my Sacramento project, I really had a lot of opposition to it. It's difficult. I did my Sacramento project. I really had a lot of opposition to it. But the long term, it's turned out really well. Areas cleaned up, it's secure, and there hasn't been a single complaint from the HOA, which really has been, I think, a good issue there. It's built a base that was needed, permitted, and it's improved the areas locally. And as a vertically integrated business, which means we produce in this facility as close to the public, we do cultivation and manufacturing and distribution from there, so we're able to have fully integrated.
Where do you do that from? Oh, Sacramento. And that's what you would bring to Willows? And that's what you'll bring to Willows?
Well, it's just your retail.
Oh.
They would bring the product.
You're just telling me, telling us what you do.
No, it's very similar, and it's totally actually the normal. And I want you to understand that this is not 2006, 2016. It's a new industry, and it's evolving at first, and it's very. And we're very focused with community health. I want to make sure you're aware.
Well, as I said before, I'm not against.
Pardon?
As I said before, I'm not against people opening up their businesses. For me, it's about the location, so it's not personal.
Well, what do you think you could bring downtown to bring tourism here?
I think that's really part of our agenda, but what I would tell you is that I think it's a really sad thing when a city council decides to dispense or revitalize our downtown area. I think that's pretty sad. I think the outskirts of Willows, Humboldt, all those areas, I get it. I'd be voting differently. I mean, I don't want to debate you, but I've also noticed that Willow Walk hasn't looked good for a number of years. And now that we're gonna have a dispensary, the paint's out, everything's coming out. And so that also attracts people into a community when business owners take care of their properties.
Take a look at it. Thank you.
When do you anticipate opening?
It could be six to eight hours. I think on the state, on the city.
Okay. How do you think having another retail cannabis sales place so close is going to affect you?
It's just, I mean, they're, it's better.
It may have, you guys may have to be in competition and.
Here's, I think the other thing is that a lot of people, there's nothing, I think the other thing that we're missing here is that there's nothing really in Glen County. So there's no real competition because the market, it's an untapped market that nobody's, I mean, you don't have anything from 30 miles, I think Chico, the other place, the other closest dispensary. So I think that you have the first chance of benefiting from being the first one to have it in this area with 30-mile radius, you're gonna bring the traffic from other places that are gonna spend their money in local businesses. I've seen it in locations where there's nothing for 20, 30 miles.
Well, it's the unintended consequences that concern me more than anything. Most people don't think about those in advance, and there's a reason why there are no dispensaries here. Hopefully you understand that because of the community. As the chairman said, the city council has changed some of the ordinances. You have several churches close by. One of them is gonna be looking in your front door. It's just that close. So that's part of the reason why you don't see any dispensaries around here very close. I was on the county board of supervisors when we enacted legislation that in the county, it could not be grown. We're all for him, but nobody's gotten interested in that yet, and there's a lot of uses for that. We wouldn't have to cut down so many trees probably. But as I said earlier, I took an oath, and I will fulfill my oath, even though I personally disagree. That's not the issue is, the issue is, have you fulfilled all the requirements?
Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Thank you. Is there anyone from the community that wishes to speak on this? You need to close it?
You need to open it.
Would like to open the public hearing?
So Reverend Robert, did you want to speak again?
A couple things. Since it seems that we have definitely, according to that man over there, have the financial part.
Speak to the mic, please.
Since we definitely, according to that young man over there, have the financial part so outlined that how much money is going to be generated, and this is so new. Couldn't you put in a code enforcement in this beginning of this process? Couldn't we ask a follow-up to say statistically, what does it look like for Willows? Since we've opened this up, what has changed? What hasn't changed? Can't we get law enforcement to find out how this is affecting our community? Where I live, across the street from these places, our church, I have baggies, I have needles, I have people parking, going all through the parking lot at night. It's horrific. And so what my suggestion is, while we think cameras make a big difference, I go to prisons and hospitals where criminals don't care about cameras. They don't care about attorneys. They don't care about judges. They don't care about none of that. And it sounds good. We have all this stuff to make sure we keep our community safe, but you're not.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
There's another gentleman back in the back row. Sorry, I forgot your name. Back here. Yeah, thanks.
Hello, my name is Joshua Owens. Represent myself in this matter. I just had a quick question regarding the advertising on the road of, excuse me, Butte Street. If you notice, there's a behavioral health outreach that shares the same road. I was wondering about the advertising. Because I was wondering if it could be potentially triggering for the community.
That's a really good question. We didn't hear the, yeah, I didn't hear the question. Sorry. What, do you mind speaking into the mic a little closer?
Sorry, I get a little nervous.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Thank you.
So my question was, if the, if we can, what's the advertising look like outside of Butte Street, outside the front of the store? So they share the same street as an outreach and behavioral health center just down the road. And I was wondering if it could potentially trigger somebody walking out. And so my comment would be, would we be able to limit the advertising of marijuana in the area or just the, or something like that?
Thank you.
Well, advertising billboards, that's under Caltrans, isn't it?
He's speaking, if I understand, sir, if I understand you correctly, you're speaking about the signage like on the street?
On Butte.
On Butte Street itself and Sycamore Street?
Yes, the like maybe a A-frame sign or a sign that hangs out on the street that can protrude out to the sidewalk or anything of that nature. Anything that's visible from the center itself could be triggered. So I just want to be able to have it in consideration to maybe, you know, advertise as much.
Currently, A-frames.
Thank you.
Signs and flags are not allowed. They're working on that in updating all of those things.
Sandwich boards are allowed.
Are they?
Mm-hmm. They have them.
Okay, well, I know that we have them, but.
If I, my understanding, I'm going to let her, I'm going to.
If I may, just to address that concern, there are a handful of conditions in here, but specifically condition 26 and 27 state no cannabis or cannabis products or graphics depicting cannabis or cannabis products will be visible from the exterior of the business premise or on any vehicles owned or used as part of the business. The front entrance of the, the front entrance of the dispensary will have a secure lobby, and no products will be visible from within this area. So we do somewhat prohibit the mass advertising based on these conditions. And I will say future design review or any signs will come through planning for additional review.
Thank you. Doug, Mr. Russ? I'm sorry, what was that? I'm not requiring what the agenda says. I don't think everybody's filled it out.
I found every community I've ever reported in has its own idiosyncrasies beyond the law, could we say, but also beyond tradition. People who live in communities always like to control what's going on in their communities. I've noticed that over my 60 years in journalism now, which is an amazing statistic. I was born with a pen in my mouth, but let me get to my point that I was asking, gonna ask. The question I was gonna ask is, if the planning commission had voted 4-0 to deny, but it's still going back to the city council, then isn't the planning commission's action non-relevant to liability and the, whatever the word is, the attraction of existing, the attraction of litigation? Since it's a subcommittee of the city council, in this case, and not a final decisioner. So that's my question. Whether it's answered or not, I I'm not asking for an answer if that's not protocol, but if there is an answer, then that's fine also.
Marty, would you like to answer that?
The planning, the planning.
Go ahead. We didn't vote that way, but if we would have voted that way.
The planning commission is an advisory body, and so therefore the applicant could appeal to the council if it was a 4-0 to deny. The city manager and the council are also able to call up the item if they wanted to. They don't also have to wait for an appeal from the applicant either. So those would have been other options.
Then to further clarify my question, if this is going to go to the city council for final approval anyway, doesn't that, doesn't that moot the issue of whether the applicant is going to appeal or not? I'm not seeing why a subcommittee, which is essentially in my mind what a planning commission is to municipality or county board, has any responsible, has any legal responsibility if it's nothing more than an advisory body, is what I'm asking.
It would be for approval of the conditional use permit, which is a requirement of the completion of the phase-two application in order to go to the city council for final approval.
But that's still, it does not circumvent my question, but it circumlocutes it.
It would not go to the city council until a conditional use permit was issued.
Well, what I'm saying is if the planning commission decides tonight that a conditional use permit approved and for the two entities, wouldn't the fact that it were to go to the city council make, make non, if it wasn't going to go to the city council, if it was a brick building and it wasn't gonna go to the city council because the CUP was in op. But this is not, this is not a brick building. This is like something to do with state regulations that it must go back up to the city council again. To me, I don't see if the city council has the final approval of the final gavel because they could erase the whole blackboard from what I understand of what the planning commission recommended and talked about.
Well, if the planning commission denied the conditional use permit and there was no appeal to city council, it would never go to city council in the first place.
But I thought it was said earlier that this is automatically still gonna have to go to the city council for their.
They will not go to the city council unless the conditional use permit is first authorized.
Won't go to the city council unless.
And the commission approved it.
Okay, so the commission approved it, but I understood that it still has to go before the city council.
Correct, because it was approved. It will go to the city.
Because of what? I'm sorry.
Because the conditional use permit was approved, it will go to city council for final approval.
For the business license basis.
But isn't.
Not for the same exact things.
Well, this is a conditional use permit. The city council will look at the final approval of the application and can apply any other conditions that seems relevant or request additional information at that time. So when we go back to the, when we go back to the conditions of approval, we talked about the city authorization. That is what would happen at, that's what would happen at the city council, not the conditional use permit. So the conditional use permit, if it is not granted at any time, would not go to the city council for approval.
Doug, why don't we shoot you an email with the whole outline about how it all works?
In actuality, I was hoping to get it tonight, but I can do that also. I'm looking for a short answer.
I don't think they're, you're gonna give that one tonight.
Forgot, forgot. I've worked 13 years for lawyers, so I don't have to be schooled on extemporaneous versus extended explications. But what I'm simply asking is, wouldn't tonight's, whether tonight's vote was a 4-0 or a 0-4, wouldn't that be synonymous? Because it still has to go to the, say again?
It is a moot point because it did not happen. You're chasing a tail that you're never gonna get an answer to.
So, but that's why I'm asking questions, just like the commissioners' occasional frustrations with legal answers. They don't really seem to penetrate to the real essence of what the community is asking. And even as a journalist tonight covering this, I was aware on several occasions, going back in time, numerous occasions, that the essence of the question was getting sort of not really answered at the level that the community lives at. It was getting answered like way up here, not, you know, where I'm standing at the grassroots. So in refut, I'm not gonna refute or argue or any such thing. I'm just saying, I'm gonna state that my clarity is, my understanding as a layperson and journalist was that 4-0, so 4-0 approval tonight of the first conditional use prevent, and hopefully when I get done with this, the second will happen, the vote, that it would only go to the city council if the conditional permit, use permit was approved for them to put on some legal burnishments and modifications if they wanted, but they couldn't revisit the whole thing. They'd be able to paint the toenails of the poodle, so to speak, but they wouldn't be able to.
Well, they changed.
Paint the whole dog.
They changed the zoning, but I'm gonna suggest that you take, Marty, that on suggestion and that you email her.
I just wanted to say that I was posing in part as a general frustration of when I leave meetings, you know, things seem like there's a lot.
How about this, Doug, real quick? The city council shall, in its sole discretion, require any additional information deemed necessary or appropriate for considerations of the issue of the license, or deny the application and state the grounds therefore, or by resolution vote to issue the license, subject to any reasonable conditions imposed by the city council. So the conditional use permit has a totally different standard than what the city council is gonna be considering. So it's not a number-two conditional use permit and the standard of that. It would be, that would be the right of the council, would be those three of them.
So the CUP has been approved by the city of Willows. That's actiomatic, correct?
That last vote approved the CUP for one of the retail dispensaries.
For one of the retail dispensaries, the CUP is approved, so the city council can overturn the planning commission unless there's an appeal.
The city council can deny the application and state the grounds therefore. They can, by resolution, vote to issue the license, subject to any reasonable conditions.
So they are empowered. So I'll stop there. I'm just gonna say I made my point. The city council is the final decisioner. I don't get why.
Correct.
Because they're elected.
They have got.
And by the attorney said that the planning commission is ensuring.
Because, well, you're misstating what I said. I said that, you're misstating what I said. What I said was that if they denied, improperly denied without facts and findings to support the denial, they were exposing the city and the commission to potential liability.
Yes, and all I'm saying is the city council is the final decision.
As then has been explained, yes, they are the final decision-maker for the cannabis business license and the application that is.
And yet it was said that the city council could overturn the whole deal.
They could deny based on findings, as Joe and I have explained to you. Correct, that the same standard applies to the council. They can't be arbitrary, gracious in their decision-making.
Okay, well.
Contact Marty, okay? She'll help you. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Would you like to speak? Thank you, Doug.
I was on the 2017 planning commission when we established the boundaries to be a thousand feet out and away from churches and parks and other things. So I see all of your concern. You're concerned about what the community thinks and you've all expressed that. But nobody expressed it better than a business owner in this town that's done a lot to revitalize the downtown area. And as I was going through the packet, looking it over, and I saw the letters in the back, I would really like to request that I could read Holly Myers' letter tonight. I would like to. I don't know if all of you got the agenda or if you know what her letter said, but I would like to read it. Dear Commissioners, will you allow a business in central commercial district to operate that has the potential to destroy the lives of our children, our community standards, and the desire to invest in our community? It is evident that we currently face scarcity of business development, affordable housing, access to medical services, and activities for our youth. Allowing an overabundance of liquor stores, marijuana dispensaries, and smoke shops provides insight into the town's social fabric, economic conditions, and community values. They also contribute to the physical and mental health outcomes of our community. This kind of desperate development and modified planning is not about creating spaces and places that benefit our community. It only contributes to the disinvestment and inability to attract land and housing development, a major retail developers, and small businesses. In the year 2022, the city conducted a community survey. The survey asked the question as to what problems do you think the city is facing? And an overwhelming percent of respondents said that there was a lack of activities for our youth. As the number one answer, it rated as an extremely serious problem. So why are we inundating our community with liquor stores, dispensaries, and smoke shops, drugs, and alcohol? We should be focusing on better development, niche shopping, swimming pools, parks, bike paths, and areas to host events and youth activities. In California, cannabis businesses are required to maintain a distance of 600 feet from any K to 12 school. Additionally, cannabis cannabis businesses cannot advertise or market cannabis products within 1,000 feet of any K 12 school. These regulations are in place to protect minors and minimize the risk of accidental exposure to cannabis products and the influence of cannabis culture. Keep in mind that our city council, in a time of desperation, directed by non-resident city employees, made the decision to lower the standards set forth in our municipal code to allow this use in our central commercial district, the very place we gather with our family and children for events, Lamb Derby, Winter Walk, Light Parade, Winter Wonderland, and Homecoming Parade. No one should profit at the detriment of our community, and I encourage you to vote no on this use. Sincerely, Holly Myers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to get up and speak before we close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Did I do it right?
You got it.
Thank you. Took me all night, but we got there. Thing the commissioners would like to say? Would you like to entertain him? I would like to entertain a motion.
Can I say something real quick? I just want to verify that we're going to strike the same word of manufacture from this conditions of approval that we did in the previous. That was the only thing I I had on that.
Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else? Any further comments? Chair would entertain a motion? Going once, going twice? Oh, may I ask a question? How many dispensaries does the city want in downtown Willow?
Currently, there's two licenses available.
No, I understand that, but have has there been discussion as far as how many we're going to have?
The city council has approved two and.
They did approve only two?
They approved a maximum of two licenses.
Two, yes. Yep.
They decide to only do one, it's possible.
Uh huh. But they did put a limit on it?
Yes, there's a limit of two.
There could, yeah, currently there cannot be any more than two licenses.
But I heard earlier someone say there was a possibility of a third one coming in.
I thought I heard that too.
The council would have to amend the ordinance
Okay.
in order to do that, because it's literally right now says no more than two.
Okay.
Was there a motion?
There was a third application. Maybe that's what the confusion was. When we did the solicitation, there were three applications and one didn't pass all the hurdles, if you will.
Okay. I would move for a resolution of the planning commission of granting conditional use permit approval of a new retail dispensary cannabis business license, CUP 2502, to WW CRS Inc. for property located at 130 North Butte Street, assesses parcel number 003 044 005 within the central commercial zone.
Okay, sir, a second.
You said that you approve it?
Yeah, I second that. It's been moved and seconded? Is this a roll call vote? Yes. Commissioner Nygaard?
No.
Commissioner Ocampo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quorum?
Aye.
Chair Brott?
No.
So there's a tie vote, you know, two yeas, two nays. The motion fails, that constitutes a denial. You're going to deny, you need to deny it based on specific facts and findings. And so my suggestion would be that we refer this back to staff so they can attempt to craft findings to support the commission's decision and would bring it back.
You could bring it back with the the word manufactured out of the report.
Well, you you deny the conditional use effectively. So, you know, that was stricken. That was, but Joe confirmed that you were going to strike it beforehand. But your vote is essentially to deny the conditional use permit. And so you have to have some findings to support that. So my suggestion is that we have staff pair findings consistent with your denial. I'm not entirely certain what we would be, because we've not heard any discussion from the commission on what you're basing your denial on. But there needs to be some sort of formal denial finding supporting that.
Would you like another question about their application?
You have made your, you have made your motion and you voted. So the die has been passed at this point.
Okay.
We are trying to salvage and come up with some sort of findings to support your decision that arguably appears to be.
Well, it would be nice to see. So you're asking us to give you a finding? Is that, or are you just telling us that we've just made your life a little more harder?
Well, you made staff's, Joe and planners' flags a little bit more difficult. They need to come up with some sort of findings to support your decision. So we, you know, we'll need some some guidance on that.
If you'd like, I can point you to the resolution about midway down with the findings that were made per staff's recommendation. Those would be the Willow's Municipal Code, Chapter 18 dot 135 dot 050, findings made for a use permit. So those three findings that are listed would need to be revised to reflect the decision of the commission.
And I also have a question about the location at the Willow Walk. And you said something about it facing the church on the other side of the street, so that's my concern.
They face each other. They're half a block apart.
So that's one of my concerns about the location at the Willow Walk.
Commission, I mean, you you've made your decision. We, whatever discussion that you're going to have at this point, I think, needs to be limited strictly to providing some information to staff so that we can try to prepare, like I said, findings consistent that will support your decision.
And additionally, there is additional findings for denial in the municipal code. So outside of the the use permit findings that are listed in your resolution, I would point you to grounds for denial, which it's A through I. At this point, maybe a recess would be the most appropriate.
Continue it with some continuity.
They voted.
Yeah.
We've heard what they, we, you know, we've heard what the planning commission has said throughout, you know, the comments on both items. We could also try to take what we've heard tonight and come back with.
Well, that's that's one option. I mean, the whatever findings we craft, if we take a recess now and and try to go through the basis for denial or try to wrap them now and come back from the recess regardless, my recommendation would be that we present to the commission at a later date formal written findings to support for them to adopt to support their decision. So if we want to take a recess, the commissioners can contemplate what was their rationale for making the decision and they can inform us of that. Or or staff can try to just piece it together and come up with something and bring it.
I would like to know how how they became WW RCF when at first they were another under another N H I V E I. How did that happen? Is that something that would work? Because the financials and everything seemed to be for, and now it seems like it's WW RCF Incorporated.
These items should have been asked and discussed during.
I'm trying to help you guys.
Yeah, well, the
That's the only reason I'm saying it.
The time to help us would have been prior to the vote.
I didn't know how the vote was going to go.
So let's I don't know.
I think it'd be better if you just let staff mull it over. We'll listen to the recording and, you know, potentially return with with something or with options or something like that that could be provide some substantive discussion amongst the commission. I mean, unless you want to recess and and then come back and give us some direction. I don't know if you want to do that.
Close your, the commissioners.
Let's stop for the need. Let staff. Come back.
Both agree with that? But we'll move on. I think we have your direction. Yep. Item seven, comments and reports. Are there any reports from any of the commissioners tonight? No? I have no report. Any staff comments and reports?
I have none.
No, thank you. So it looks like it's 8:25 and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming.